I pledge allegiance to the flag, of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board members, good evening. Faculty, staff, and visitors, good evening. I would like to, before we take attendance, jump to number nine, unscheduled audience participation. If there's anyone in the audience that is seeking to have a five-minute discussion with the board, the process is described here. And Angela, do you have the forms there, or are they back there?
They're on the table by the wall.
Okay. So, right there by the table on the other side of the water is little slips that you would fill out and then give to Angela. In turn, she gives them to me, and then we'll address that when we get to nine. But I just wanted to have you know that step.
He's trying to get her attention, Dick.
Not you.
Oh, I was gonna have him take attendance, and I see him pointing. Okay. Would you like to take attendance, Mr. Steppich?
I couldn't. I just wanted to make some sales first.
Well, then add a little bit of a thing right in front of the attendance.
My daughter Jenna is back here, and she's in leadership program, and she's selling the new Oxford cups. I know a lot of you have already been hit up for them, but they're really cool. So if anybody's interested, wave your hand, and she can show you the forms. Thank you. President Donnelly.
I'm here.
Vice President Brazington.
Here.
Secretary Steppich is here. Trustee Schaefer.
Here.
Trustee Bailey.
Here.
Treasurer Guthrie.
Here.
Trustee DeLassanne.
Here.
Very good. Mr. Throen, are there any changes to the board agenda?
None.
All right. Item number three, consent agenda. Would someone like to make a motion?
I will.
Yes, sir.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there support?
Support.
Support, Mr. DeLassandro. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Prearranged request to address the board?
None.
None. Board of Education matters? None. Curriculum instruction, how are we gonna do today, Mr. Weaver?
We'll do all right, hopefully.
You're gonna keep Heather excited?
We're gonna try.
I am not gonna live that one down, I don't think.
A little song and dance and everything else, all right. Been practicing.
All right. We're gonna have a presentation from Mr. Johnson on a new high school class, digital imaging technologies.
Mr. Menzel. So, I'm not sure how many of you guys got to go through this. I'm just gonna read to you whatever I've given to your board packet, but I'll actually read it to you. So, within Career Tech Ed, a couple years ago, when I started teaching, noticed that there's a big gap between the sequencing of how the IT program is being taught versus what we are receiving state-based funding reimbursements back for. So if we did a little rearranging to how we presented that sequencing, we'll change significant dollars returned to us for doing that. What we noticed is there's a significant gap between what the students were getting within the course segments that they need to know before they got to the advanced Q courses. So, students were showing up in advanced Q courses, but never having the first class to really build all the segments of understanding. So, we have rewritten the curriculum to be a one-year class, not two different classes that used to be a semester, and you might get one your freshman year, and one your senior year, junior year, all over the place. So, this is really a sequencing that has helped. On average, we have about 165 students that transitioned through these classes. Through the past couple years, you'll see there that the only completers were five. So this year, we have, what, 187-ish students in the class, hoping to return that per student. So 187 times 2,100 returned from the state. So you can see why smart business in education made sense to do a little rearranging. But in the meantime, we got to sequence the class and really come up with a better course layout of teaching the kids the segments, and those segments moving them to understand advancement to how it really benefits them once we get into doing a lot of these segment skills within projects. So, you'll see they are understanding categories such as project management, legal, ethical, design, safety, multi-digital productions, digital communication, graphic design concepts, web design and layout, web development, administration, test and evaluation, and technical support. And if you're like me, you're like, holy cow, that was just a lot of stuff. This is a survey class. So we're gonna touch a lot of stuff to inspire them to figure out, oh, I wanna go deeper in A, B, C, or D. So the rationale has been to push forward and understand what our staffing needs gonna be as we really sequence this better and get to where students grow that fall into one of those categories. So enrollment is really driven solely by those course selection sheets you might see that come home in eighth, ninth, 10th grade to figure out what you want. So, those are where these numbers have come from. For this year, we had 223 students, but this was their primary selection. So you can see then there's a need and a request that the students are asking for these kinds of courses. In the CTE world, we call them segments, but most people would hear them in education as standards. So those things that I just read, and you have in your Atlas breakdown in your board packet, you have all of those segments, and it's a crazy long list. And our kids don't realize that we're only two weeks into school, and they already hit about 13 of them. They just don't even know it. It's like learning how to do cloud-based computing collaborative with a group. Well, they did a group presentation together, and then they shared their presentations with one another, got sat down together, worked on it together. So they're understanding how that world works a little bit. So there's a long list, and I'll leave that for you to read because it's really interesting to see all the things that just are natural in their flow of education. This course fits itself to competency-based evaluation really well, which fits really well into IV standards. So we have written this course to be an MYP, really aimed at the ninth and 10th graders, and see what of those 12 segments they get, and then test them. And we've already given them a pre-test. And what's interesting is because this is a first-year class, a lot of 11th and 12th graders are in it due to needing an elective. They've never had it. It's new. But probably 15 or 20 of my previous students from the Q courses landed in it. Fortunately, they passed the pre-test. So that was pretty cool to see, but to understand the skills and knowledge are there in our students. So I'm going super fast, trying to conserve your meeting time. But it's fun to be able to see the students applying IV and MYP, design cycle, and thought process in this class because it's hands-on, project-based, learning 13 soft skills for the workplace environment, and at the same time, doing real-world projects. I was brought one from my class that sits on my desktop to kids be reminded that what you're learning is applicable to the real world today. And last year, one of my graphic design students actually did some product placement and advertisement, and actually did the finished product for a company and their product packaging. So that sits in my room. So some of the course goals and things, I'd rather let you ask questions of these things, but our course goals are to help students really become problem solvers and thinkers as opposed to memorizers and just doers. So that they can take something, apply to the design cycle. Anywhere they come into the design cycle, whether it's retooling or fresh thought, understand that we want them to be able to exercise creativity versus copy reproduction, and that they walk away with serious understanding of, again, those 13 soft skills that help them with time management, and so on and so forth. So, course overview real quick, just to help you see it. So this is broken down into three units of IV coursework. We're living, obviously, in this first one, and we're understanding what good design is. And students right now are working on returning back to us through their research of lecture based on their points of design that they've landed and concluded in. So it's really fun to see. The second semester is really gonna be applying design to communication, both visual and print, or literature, or packaging, and then figuring out how that affects or is affected by culture. And then the third unit, Mr. Menzel, what are we studying?
We are studying Microsoft certifications. And that whole, really, initiative came from our CTE advisory meetings that we have twice a year with business owners in the community. And they came to us and said, you know, we get a lot of applicants that come to us and say they're proficient in Microsoft Word, or Microsoft Excel, or PowerPoint. Well, proficient means a lot of things to a lot of different people. Having, coming in there and saying, I am certified in Microsoft Word, Excel, or PowerPoint is a whole different meaning. And that certification's gonna happen through Microsoft, and the students are actually gonna work on their own. They're self-paced modules with the support of the teacher in the lab. And they will be going through these modules at their own pace. They're gonna be going through Microsoft Word to start with, and that's about a nine-week process. After they finish, whenever they finish, they can sit down and take the certification exam. After Microsoft Word, they go into Microsoft Excel, which is about a six-week module, give or take. And then after that, they would go into PowerPoint. And hopefully, they can earn a certification piece. They can put that on their resume. They can put that on their college application. That is something that means a lot. It should mean a lot to them, but it also means a lot outside of Oxford or community, and to maybe anyone that are applying for a position.
One of our segments, oh, sorry.
Can I ask a question yet?
I might answer it, but go ahead.
Okay. So, these are real-world certificates that they can get? These aren't like school certificates, like they would be applicable and recognizable to whatever, if you were applying for a job, or whatever?
It's...
It's not an Oxford certificate?
It's not an Oxford certificate. It's a national certificate.
Right, okay.
Yeah. You could sit down and take, you could sit down, go through the module, take the exam yourself. It's about $110.
Okay.
Just take the certification piece. It's free, of course, for our students. We have...
We buy licenses.
We buy licenses through the state.
Ah, okay.
So, part of the segments within Career Tech Ed is your students are taught through a virtual environment for a percentage of their time in your class. So we brainstormed the best way to do this. So students will actually start this ahead of winter break because I'm sure they'll all dig in over winter break and probably accomplish most of it, and come back and then finish with PowerPoint and all their other ones. Yeah, right.
Yeah.
So, the reality is, though, this green segment here is not IV. It's the only unit that's not IV. But it will conclude in all students working toward completion. They're great. I mean, it's checked, it's marked out within the units and timeframe to do it within that window, and then take that certification at the end. And that gets them their base, which is Microsoft Word is the base, and everything else is seen off of that. So that gives you a little brief, just conceptual overview of what we got going. I'm gonna end there, so you can ask questions.
Please.
Thank you. I have two questions, actually. One is very pertinent to what you were just discussing. I was under the impression, and correct me, help me understand, that our students use Google Docs currently. How does that work as far as getting access to the Microsoft? Do we have Microsoft software on all of our laptops, on everything?
Yeah.
Okay.
A lot of times, we're using Google Docs for the ease of transfer wherever the student's at. You can gain access and say, oh, it's on that machine. No. In our room, in our environment, it's, Google Docs is nice, and we could use Microsoft 365 if that's what we wanted, but we haven't paid for that. We have Google, which is a nicer suite for what we're doing for right now. And the students can collaborate, share, and do things, which is, again, one of those Career Tech Ed segment pathways that you have to prove proficiency in.
Yeah, that's really good to know. I was concerned, you know, about that being an additional thing, but I'm glad that that's already a provision.
Most businesses are still using, are using Microsoft.
Yes, I know.
And it's not, I don't think it's going anywhere. And for our students to be able to still become proficient in that because that's what most businesses are using.
Yeah.
I think that's important.
That's good. My second question is, other than with Unit Three, and, you know, this may, this may be true anyway, but it sounds like professional organizations are involved in assessing our Unit Three. Are they involved with all the different units in assessing and giving us feedback on the course content?
Within the IT department, I have an advisory of anyone that works within the industry that's in that IT world. That I am mandated by CTE state rules to meet with twice a year.
Oh, that's great.
Taking the feedback from them, what do we need to do? What are we achieving? Where are we missing? What do we need to grow in?
Awesome.
Which is what bloomed and launched the OSEC CTE IT pathway with Macomb Community College.
Oh, got it, okay.
So my daughter's, my daughter's tracking that route right now.
Okay, okay. Excellent. Thank you for catching me up on that. That's great.
Mr. Steppich. How many students did you say you had?
I have 34 first hour, minus five hours.
I thought there was only one hour, but it's all data.
That I'm teaching. Mr. Menzel teaches the rest.
223.
Okay.
That's the request of the class. That's just the request of the class. Not all of them got seated, due to numbers.
But there's more than just the first hour?
Yes, there's five total hours we talk.
Okay. It's hard to read what that green space is, but that only looks like about six, seven weeks.
That's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10-week tests.
Okay. And just Word was nine weeks?
It's all based on Word as the first certification. Word is what they teach you, because if, once you go to Microsoft, file drop-down menu is pretty much the same information through all.
It's faster quicker.
They use Word as the premise of the foundation teaching.
And is that what you said, that before winter break, you're gonna drop some?
We will test and certify them on the base, which is Word, and we hope some of them want more. And it'll be self-paced. It's all online. They can do it on any model, any computer, wherever they want. So it's like a blended environment. Ova's come to our classroom for 10 weeks. And we're gonna monitor the room, just like we're in Ovalab, there's a monitoring classroom, keeping kids on track, pushing them along, making sure they're doing it. No kid will walk out the door, I just didn't do it. That's not an option. If you're in my class by that time, I'm gonna hold you along, push you along. Your head's set on doing your mouth.
And with the licenses that you have, they can get as many certifications in Microsoft as they want?
We are licensed for like...
Over 500.
Yeah. 500 Microsoft certifications, which is everything. So those kids will be open to do that entire Microsoft module and everything. But for our standard, we're going after Microsoft Word. And then it's open for them to go further.
Gotcha.
So a good parent at home, if they had a student in Mr. Johnson's first hour, push them along, kick Jen, one of them right along.
Yeah. Thank you. That's what I wanted to know.
Mr. Bailey, a couple questions. You said you had a bunch of juniors and seniors that were dumped into that. What are the odds of them completing that to get that $2,100, or are they...
Oh, they're still considered a completer. They're just not fulfilling their requirement within the IV world. They're, this class was written in MYP format to be able to take in every ninth and 10th grader, still be giving them an IV module talk class. 10th, 11th grader, or 11th and 12th grader, just along for the ride, they'll still be a completer, though, I guess.
Okay. And then one more. You said you had an advisory, you had a bunch of local businesses. Do we have anything, or are we looking at possible internships, or something where they can see this and work?
Yeah. Let me give you a CTE Big World overview, which is what those first slides were that I skipped real through fast. CTE has a base class, and it could be one semester, two semesters, three semesters, depends on how you do it, to teach the 12 segments of that area that the state sees as necessary. Beyond that, you have what are called Q courses, which you have to qualify, Q courses, by taking this first one to be in the rest of them. You usually have two years of Q courses, and just like our health science program, that third or fourth year is an internship placement. So they're industry-based, put-in-work environments that we collect back from any of those advisory panels. And then they experience the real-world industry applying that set of classes out there as interns. And they actually get work release from school for two hours to go to them.
Thank you.
That's fantastic.
Help me understand, I mean, obviously, this is nothing that we need to vote on. It's already in place, and we're already doing it, but you will be...
We get it, it's in two weeks.
Right.
This is one of those classes that's already, was being taught, and you pay them completely?
Okay, so we're...
We still need approval. Trying to get everything through. We could not wait to start at the school.
Okay.
So this is one of those horseshoe ones, where we're close?
All right.
This got written in August.
That was part one. Part two is the dollars and cents of it all. You say there's 185 students, is what I heard, at $2,100, that's about...
And that flexes every year. The state changes what they see as hot jobs. So then they change the value, trying to drive what we're teaching to help create, like the Marshall Plan.
Okay.
We're trying to fulfill those hot jobs.
So my question is this, in order to qualify for the $2,100, what courses do they need to complete? Or do they, if they complete everything and they're a completer?
We have rewritten this course so that in this year, they will all be moved through from beginning to end, take the proficiency test of what the standards are being taught on at the end, score the national norm average of what's determined for that test. Every one of these students, my goal, is gonna graduate from this year as a completer.
Okay. And then, our cost as a district doesn't increase because they're taking this course, but our bottom line realizes more revenue?
Definitely, yeah. So, within a year, my first year working in the school district, Dr. Skilling came to me and challenged me, really dig into this as a business and business owner, and look at how we grow and do CTE better to increase bottom line revenue.
Okay.
So this has been a highlighted line on my list of ways we could be doing school smarter, and then receiving benefit back from it. And we're seeing those returns.
Okay.
At the same time, we have kids that are actually getting the whole of the education.
Right. And I needed to understand that completely from beginning to end because obviously, we want to provide quality education, obviously. But if we can piggyback that with increasing our bottom line, that's obviously a big benefit.
Right now, those, Mr. Weaver and Lisa Butts do all the state reporting at the end of every year. Obviously, it's, it's money's coming back to us, so we have to really benchmark what they are. But our CTE fund is more than double over the past three years.
Okay. That's great. Thank you.
Dr. Brazington, you had a question a long time ago.
Oh, it was the answer.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Actually, I do have one.
Oh, one more.
Is this seated only, or is this something like the OSEC?
Funny that you ask that question. I've been a video in every class that we've been teaching. I've already got a website built, but the goal is this class would be what's called SlipTalk, meaning the kids can walk in, module for day one, week, or week one, day one's there. Click it, do it. Week two, day two. Week three, day three. Week four, day four. Ova's influenced me a little bit, so. So the website's already being constructed. I just don't wanna release it until we've really got...
Thank you. I'll have Q courses later on, too.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. So Q courses that feed out of the IT program would be Digital Creations 1 and 2, which I've teach both of those, and a graphic design course. You might see a problem. That's three courses, and I'm a part-time teacher. So I've said to Mr. Throen, or numerous times, and Mr. Weaver, you might really wanna think about finding a full-time IT instructor because I can't do both the worlds that I live in full-time. So when I see the value of my job downtown, and I see the value of my job in the classroom, and Mr. Menzel teaches IT and business, so he really is a business background certified. He oversees all the business end. And really, we have enough courses for him to be teaching all business and... So we've created one of those revenue streams that's actually subject as well for classes and things that we talk, so just...
How does that plus relate to web design as well, too?
Yeah, so web design is an IT course as well. So Mrs. Linderman is teaching those, and we actually, she's an accounting teacher. So we got, we got trouble needs all across the board, so.
Great question, Mr. Bailey. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. And sorry, I mentioned Mr. Menzel earlier. So they've done a great job with the curriculum. They've really worked hard on getting it all squared away. It's been a lot of work. I apologize that it was a little bit tardy as far as we tried to get it all in time, but with other duties and whatnot. There was, and did you mention the drone?
Kids will also learn drones-like technology.
That's for Mr. Throon. So he ordered me that we had to have a class with a drone.
And with any luck, I'm gonna get that certification.
That's a whole other IT pathway, sir.
So we're really trying to be as best we can, cutting edge, and we're really excited about the opportunities. In two weeks, we'll ask you to approve the curriculum. You know, we've already had, like Mrs. Darnell looked at as well, as well as I have, and so forth. And like I said, it was ready for the start of the school year. It was just trying to get it all lined up and the finishing touches. We had a few things that were later on to be...
Real quick, is this considered an elective?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yep.
Any questions, sir?
All right, well, hopefully this'll work. It was usually I kinda going through the internet through my email to access presentations. It's just been easier, more reliable. Of course, tonight, the, I did not wanna recognize my email, so there was a little bit of trawl there. So I had to go through the...
You didn't get the memo?
Yeah, apparently. Yeah, apparently I didn't get it. So anyway, so we're gonna get started, and we're gonna look at last year's M-Step scores. I think you have the presentation. Just a couple of things to kinda highlight. These are the English language arts scores. You know, five grade levels were above the county average for them, if not all of them, at the secondary level. And then all grade levels, as usual, is above the state average. And then you can also see ninth grade average proficiency increased over 2016, 17 scores. This is one of those areas where I think in the elementary, I think we're getting there. We're really excited what some of our screener scores are showing in the K-2 area. But it's one of those things that takes some time. We are hoping that elementary to kinda finish off the move that we have, we've really worked hard on literacy. I must say that the elementary principals were a little deflated when they saw the scores because they were expecting them to jump. But we've done a ton of work with foundational literacy. Those basic reading skills and getting those cleaned up and making sure we're addressing kids' needs in those areas. What we have not worked on to this point was more of those ELA literacy skills, the higher level, the analytical, interpretive comprehension skills that we're going to be working on this year. That is kinda like the last piece with our reading workshop that we're putting in place. They're called literacy progressions. They really mirror the M-Step comprehension questions. M-Step comprehension questions ask a lot about character analysis. They also ask a lot of questions about theme. There's some vocabulary in there. And the Lucy Cawkins progressions will help with that immensely and help to kinda clean, I think, pushes, push that part over the edge as far as moving those scores finally. The part that we do know that is working, and we've seen it with our screener scores, which are nationally norm, is that they are able to literally comprehend better. That part has shown improvement, but it has yet to transfer over, and it's not uncommon. It takes, this is, you are moving kids skill by skill and trying to push them along. It is not uncommon for this to take two, three, four years to get things to move and get them going upwards and get them going quickly in that direction. But I think we're pretty excited between having Anita come on board, Mrs. Concha. Really excited about that. One of the reasons, and, you know, we were having a conversation, her, Mr. Bass and myself, and, you know, I just said, you know, one of the reasons why I really, myself, wanted to hire Mrs. Concha was her knowledge on the Readers and Writers Workshop. Same time, I don't wanna put too much pressure on her like I just did, but it really does help. I mean, I did a ton of research. I mean, I read book after book and learned those early literacy skills. And while I say I did all right, in fact, I would say for myself, I did impress Ms. Magdaleno. She was very impressed by the amount of knowledge that his gave. I don't have that experience. I never taught the Readers and Writers Workshop. So we're really excited to have her on board to help us with that last piece and kinda improving that tier-one construction, so. And the elementary principals are very, very likely as well, too. So it was a big role now. So you're nodding off, I guess. See, I gotta get the guru in. I was told I was boring.
It's all about engagement.
Are you, before you go, I'm gonna face a question. Jerry?
Mr. Weaver?
Yeah.
I was looking at this thing earlier, and I see that we're pretty significantly above the state average.
Yes.
In all the areas, but I was concerned at some of the areas that dropped off significantly. In all the areas, but I was concerned at some of the areas that dropped off significantly. But then, trying to understand this, so like, let's look at 17, M-Step 6, okay, and we're at 67%.
Yes.
And we go across, for 18, it's 53, and that's a different group of kids, right?
It's a completed, they moved over to here.
And so now they're the M-Step 7, which is more in keeping with that, so we got a smart group of kids or something at that point.
Well, what you'll see is, the dirty young lady secret is that M-Step scores mirror the demographics and the makeup of the class, and each class is very different from, and every principal will tell you, each class is a little bit different.
Sure.
And that goes along with the M-Step scores. But that's no reason, we still impact these scores, and that's where we have to figure out, and that's where we have our student growth process, and we have other things that we do to try to look at how can we make the biggest impact and try to move a kid. So we tend to try to look at cohorts more than anything else, like where is that group moving? Other problem you have, quite frankly, is the M-Step, like, the reading section, there are 20 different targets in this area, I forget exactly, but it's around 20 different targets. There are also 20 different questions as well, and behind every target, there's two, either one to three or four standards behind it, so I know I'm getting a little bit in depth there. So the problem, what I'm saying is, in the end, is that test has a lot of variability, it is not a solid test. Matter of fact, and I've said this before when I go down to open schools, they tell us really not to use the item analysis to in-depth, and don't make major decisions off of it, because it is not statistically valid because of the number of questions that they ask, so we got to be careful, but it's still, in the end, as far as looking at a whole group and what we're working on, it's still a decent measure to see where do those kids go, and can you move them and really get the teachers and the principals a target. So at the same time, I'm saying, hey, you got to be careful with it, it's one of those things, you got to take anything, one measure, with a bit of careful. Like, when you compare that with our, where we're at with our screener assessment results, and then you kind of look at things and see where they line up and see how that coincides, how they sit next to each other.
Thank you.
Yes?
Thanks. I can see that playing in with the M-Step, the difference between classes and what you just discussed. I'm wondering what your take is on the difference between SAT, however, I do see.
SAT is research, I mean, that, they have the money. See, the problem is, is years ago, and Dr. Brazing can remember, they used to release the MEAT results, and then they also released a rare items as well as an item analysis, and that's because they had paid, they used state resources to really develop items. They have not been developing as many items with the M-Step, so they don't even let you see the questions. The only thing you know is that it was a general question about this topic, you don't know from what angle they asked that question or anything. So that's why it's really hard to see what that test really means.
With the SAT test?
But the SAT, no, that's the M-Step. The SAT, on the other hand, that is a corporation that gets paid millions and millions of dollars, just like the ACT, and they have sound grounding in their research, and that's what they do, like, if your child goes and takes the SAT.
Right.
Or the ACT, they'll have a fourth section that they'll be field testing, that's what that is, all those items, and same thing with like the GRE.
So, but we have Krista Price, like, teaching the SAT preparation course, what can we do to make sure that that kind of a drop doesn't happen, or is that attributable to switching to the SAT?
Mr. Wolf, did you want to address some of the opportunities that kids have? We were just discussing this last night at the parent night.
Squeezing smaller students to that class, or the classes can only leverage so much English relative to a class of 400 students instead of the SAT. So it's really being a resource, one specifically Khan Academy out in public for us, our community and our parents to view, and link with Students College Board accounts. So which you can take your SAT scores, for example, as a sophomore, and you can connect into Khan Academy and those scores help in, not at overall score, but specifically for the standards in that assessment, that will spit out practice tests, actually, four for you throughout the year that are pertinent to where your strengths and weaknesses are. So it's like a skill-based assessment relative to your specific results previous year.
So you see, I'm sorry, keep going.
And it really, it really breaks it down for the individual student. Not that the SAT course that we have isn't valuable, it's incredibly valuable, the students obviously want to explore different elective courses and different pathways that we're providing in the district, so it's kind of a balanced option for a lot of students. So that's something outside of the school that we're going to be communicating down advertising more to parents and really getting them aware of what the benefits are for Khan Academy and thinking that through College Board accounts.
Is there opportunity, you mentioned that there might be competition for getting into Mrs. Price's class, and you know, that's tough to get enough, you know, enough room for, does that indicate that maybe we need to build the Khan Academy curriculum into some kind of elective course or some kind of process where kids get that through the ninth to 12th grade years here in school? As a parent, as a parent of a senior, I get the flyers and the SAT course preparations and the, you know, and Khan Academy is the best resource, I completely agree that that's a great idea to get that messaging out to parents and do a better job with that, but I'm really wondering if we need to incorporate that into any curriculum, if there's any room for that, and I understand that that's too much pressure, we've got so much going on, and so, it's so many things we have to prioritize, so not to put pressure on you, I'm just wondering.
That's my job.
Okay.
You know, we're working on our curriculum as we speak within our university department, and so last year, we had our staff working tirelessly outside of the school day, but also pulling them out of the class as much as we could without really impacting the students within that class that year, doing a lot of curriculum work with the standards, and then add a finer resource for this current school year, one of which is College Board Screen Board.
Yeah.
So that's one that's better aligned to be able to standard within the SAT or the PSATs, and it is, you know, with the RAN Slam, which gets that we're looking for, it's a step in the right direction to prepare our students for the skills that we are going to translate to this, or these sets of tests.
So we're hoping to see that number steady out, that difference between year to year not be such a drastic difference in our SATs.
You would hope that it would not be such a drastic drop, and that's what I think we were, at the beginning of the year, they went through an item analysis report, and that's one thing that the SAT is much better at, is the SAT's item analysis is pretty thorough, and it's pretty, it gives you the information you need to make adjustments in the instruction. Like Mr. Wolf said, we also adopted a new curriculum, you know, that's better than directly aligned with the SAT, the company that does both is, it puts out Screen Board as well as does the SAT testing, so, so it's aligned, so we'll be looking at that as a digital product as well, so we'll have good access to that at all times. The other thing I wanted to bring up is, we have the option at OVA, kids, we give that to our seated kids as well, that they can sign up and take the prep workshop as possible a little bit, because we do have to have teachers to help support that and so forth, but that's an option as well, too. But the best preparation is going to happen in that classroom.
Good.
Is really looking at that tier one, which is classroom instruction, and getting that to be as competent and as good as possible, so that it does the best job, and it's about trying to also then meet the individual kids' needs, and that's where that digital product kind of helps as well, too, to have that accessibility, and also that flexibility to be able to kind of meet kids where they are and try to bring them along with that.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Wolf.
Anything else to add?
Yeah, we definitely do expand much deeper at the start of the year with that item analysis within College Board, which is really resourceful, and there's no one more really compared than you said, and really, that's certainly what, you know, areas we gain from the most as well is Carrie Conn, who's our librarian, and just, she's a tech worker, so she's able to crunch those numbers, because she does that for breakfast every morning she goes in, and really is a time saver for our staff, so they can make the best use of their time in the hour and a half in those first few Wednesday months. So that starts off our school year for our schools' learning goals, and our department goals, and then just guide and drive our individual teacher goals through the school year, so we're trying to get better aligned on that at the starting point being, you know, the SAT.
Okay, thank you.
And so, and the other part I should have brought up, too, is also at the 611, the first time ever, we have an ELA coach, Mrs. Darnell, who also does the NYPD, but she's also a half-time ELA coach, because we had, through Title II grant funding, we had Joe Mobley.
Yeah.
Who is a former teacher, obviously, and is now a math coach and ID coach as well, too.
Oh, that's great.
Really excited, because, I mean, if you look at it, we had a half, we have a half of ID coordinator at the elementaries, but most of those elementaries are 20 to 25 teachers, classroom teachers. When here, you're dealing with probably 55 teachers at the middle school, and you're dealing with 80 to 90 teachers at the high school, so we hope with the increased services, that will start gaining dividends as well, because I also put up here the math scores, as you can see, four grade levels are at or above the county average, those tend to be at the elementary, so it's kind of interesting, the secondary, I mean, if you had to close my eyes and I wouldn't have saw the numbers before, I would have thought that probably in the end, if I was to guess, it would have been foot blocked, quite honestly. So that was interesting to see, and then, all grade levels, once again, above the state average, and then five grade levels above 2016-17 scores, and then both were within. Now, if you remember, three years ago, three years ago, yeah, 15, 16, we put in an elementary curriculum, math expressions, that's all brand new, so we made it through that transition, and the scores seemed to be doing well. About two years ago, we did Math Big Ideas at the middle school, and then last year, we started implementing Big Ideas at the high school as well, too, and with the addition of Joe, he's, Mr. Mobley, he's going to be able to help coach them into that and help support them. It takes a lot, there's a lot of materials that come with this stuff, and the teachers, you know, they've got the day-to-day, the level of 180 kids, and they're constantly coming and going with them, and so the half the services of the instructional coaches is huge, to be able to do some of that work, to help support those teachers, to make it accessible for the teachers, so. Science, just to kind of let you know, there is no science scores this year, science is in field testing, we are, they are in the process of switching over to NGSS, and so that is new, next generation science standards is what that stands for, and that is new national recognized standards that Michigan adopted, and so they are field testing the items, and they are field testing again this year, so you will not have any results this year as well, too. We are in the process, we have adopted, just so you know as well, we've already kind of laid out the plan for addressing these issues. K5 has already updated their kits to the new standards, and I have taught the Earth and physical, and I believe they're doing the life this year, am I correct in that?
There are a few grade levels.
Yeah, we got, except for a few, the kids weren't quite ready, and so we had to make a decision with our ID units to wait, like, if we would have waited and taught them at the end, but it would have destroyed our ID units, so we'll wait to teach those next year. The kids will be fine if they move through, they will be just fine. Some of the topics really did change, so the content itself, they're not going to be like skipping or missing real, I think it's more the way in which the approach is teaching them, and it lines up much better with their ID, so we're really excited about that. 628, if you remember, you approved a resource last year, they are in the process, we unpacked that, had a day of PD prior to the year, they have bright shiny Google Chromebooks, which you approved as well, too, in their classrooms, they are extremely excited about that, and they, because their curriculum is purely is digital, is a digital resource, but they still, you know, they still do the labs, and there's all hands-on component as well, too.
Good.
So, and then science, we are going to be working with Mr. Wolf, and we are looking at course sequencing there, and we are going to be bundling the standards there, so we are going to be embedding Earth science standards into biology, chem, physics, and probably enough, Mr. Wolf, for the former science teachers. And then we have social studies, two grade levels above the county averages, and all grade levels are above the state average. Social studies, this is one thing that hasn't changed over the years, the test has pretty much been the same. Can't change history. Mr. News, anything to add about the social studies?
Just supporting all the literacy standards as much as possible, I'm going to be a lot of the core areas of management.
Yeah, so the social study standards are really tied into the literacy and being able to re-improve them, although there is a lot of, these are like the older standards, they did propose a change in the social study standards, but it has not been adopted completely yet, there's, there's been a controversy. Here's our SAT mean average score, it did go, it is below the county average, this is a priority for the high school, we have had many conversations on this and trying to figure exactly where we are and where we stand with that. It is above still the state average, and it did dip down from below the state, or last year's average on the test. And that's it, is there any questions? Mr. Bailey?
How, how do these reflect actual grades and learning retention? I know some kids can test well and don't remember tomorrow, other ones may not test well.
The best predictor still of a kid's college success is probably, not probably, but the research shows, is their grades. Down the road is how they did on standardized tests, if you've ever had children, you would never measure your child by one test.
Right.
You know that much more goes into that, there's the perseverance, I mean, if you, just going to college, or going to a two-year college, or going to accreditation school, or any type of tech training, you know, there's a lot of factors go into that success. Some of that is your perseverance, your grit, your tenacity, your life situation, like, where are you at with your family support, your financial support, so to boil it down to like, hey, a test score is going to be the end-all, be-all, and most colleges are beyond that nowadays, although it still is a major component, and most of them take a lot of other things into factor, and that's where you look at and try to see, okay, how successful are students trying to be? And that's where we try to do and offer classes, such as the digital imaging class that you saw today, because there are many different paths to be successful. I was just watching the news the other day, there's a gentleman, I forget which state, I think Minnesota or something like that, Wisconsin, one of those, that he had made it in business, never graduated college, he said, I think he barely graduated high school, but was extremely intelligent, did a great job in business, made millions, and so he wanted to give back, and he gave this community the ability, that class, to all go to college and stuff. So it just shows, though, that there's many different ways to be successful in life, there isn't just one, and that's what we have tried to do here at Oxford, is to try to meet all those different needs and try to give kids different career paths, and try to make them and move them along to be successful in something they want to do and where they want to go with their life.
Good.
At the end, it still is important to us, they work extremely hard on this, we try to make sure that we do everything in our hands that we possibly can to address this, the different teachers do test preps, and as we get closer to the SAT, they introduce more concepts related to the SAT and so forth, so it is something that we also know that, hey, if you want to get into certain schools, that unfortunately is the measure they have, because it's a little easier to point to, and that's why sometimes I think the population has gotten a little too hung up on test scores.
Thank you.
And it's very hard to measure anybody by test, there's a lot that goes into it, it's just like the NAEP, that national test, and some of the cut scores that are involved in that are actually, you know, when they actually have other countries take the NAEP, they do just the same as we do, but yet that never gets recorded, so, I mean, there's a lot of things that go into this, and you have to be very, very careful with how much you read into a single test. But we still take it very serious, and like I said, the high school did a great job tearing the test apart, seeing where they can improve, matching it up with the curriculum materials, and like I said, and also we have two instructional coaches that are helping out now, so we're excited for progression. Dr. Brazing?
Yeah, I just feel that we've done a lot of work at the elementary level, the elementary principals, you know, they have really truly become instructional coaches in those buildings, I think professional development has been really focused in K5, I think the results you can see in those three, four, five, six M-Step scores, and I think we just need to have that same kind of focus and wrap our arms around the middle school and high school, like we've done K5.
And that's what we're trying to do, and that's actually what Mrs. Concha has allowed me to do, I'll be quite honest, trying to do both ends of it. Well, I've tried my best, it's been very hard to maintain and keep all the balls in the air, and the principals have been fantastic to work with, and they try to do whatever they can, but it does help to kind of coordinate efforts and try to make sure that we're moving in the same direction, because it's, you know, I was building principal for seven or eight years, I figured what, I think I was pretty successful, but at the same time, I also know it's hard to. But at the same time, I also know it's hard to, when you got eleven hundred and fifty kids showing up, eighty to ninety teachers, buses and everything else. And you got lunch to make sure all the kids get it. You got heating and cooling that doesn't work. And I mean, it's hard to get out of that day to day stuff, as you well know, Dr. Brazier.
But I think every other principal will tell you they're doing the same thing, like the score. Like Oxford isn't unique, their kids aren't unique, their building issues aren't unique.
Yeah.
I mean, that's how the score comes about. It can be an average. So, um, the other question I have is Oxford early college, are their scores reflective in this?
In the district average, yes, they're the, uh, the overall.
Okay, and they're truly the best and brightest on that track. That really does sort of help our SAT scoring. Does OVA or Crossroads fit into our SAT overall?
Yes, the district is everybody that took the SAT. So that is everybody. And then you can separate it out by building. And if you want those results, I can get those to you as well, too, by building and so forth. Um, and let you see those.
But all means also there are.
It's every, that's everything.
Four hundred kids.
Right.
That took the SAT. Yeah. Again, I think you should still celebrate what's going on.
Oh, we're, we're happy.
We have more of a focus for secondary, I think, in my mind.
Yeah, we, we've worked extremely hard. We're hoping for a little more of a bump in the elementary, but it'll come. We have faith and, uh, and we'll keep plugging along. And Mrs. Concha, if you've got anything to add?
I just want to say too, like, I'm not someone who likes to make excuses. I also think it's important to know that for the last three years that the M step has been, the M step has also changed every year. And so like the number of questions have changed, the types of questions have changed. So we're also not really comparing apples to apples, which is really unfair. So it's, again, it's important, but I also think it's important to know the factors that work on the S.
The state has mandated that they be doing the most testing time. And in doing that, they've eliminated, um, counted questions. And that's why it's become unstable as an item analysis. And then, and they introduced this year, the, last year, the, the text dependent analysis as well, too, to try to measure the rating still. So it's, like I said, it's one measure. It's not the end all be all. And, but it gives us information to work from and we go onward and onward from there.
Dan?
Ken, you had mentioned earlier, typically takes two to three years to kind of shift. Correct? I've been around a little while, but we've always been chasing this number, chasing, 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 trying to increase, trying to increase. And we took a little bit of a dip here. When you said two to three years, I think it's important to remind this board, because they may not have been here to that whole time. The money and the efforts that we've made in the last year and a half to two years, that, that, this is not going back five or six years. This is a new thought process and a new way of doing things.
Yeah, and not to disparage anything that was done three, four years ago or anything. Yeah, but I'm agreeing with you in the fact that, yes, two, three, four years ago, for example, at OE, there was a principal and classroom teachers basically. And there was not even, uh, anybody to address gen ed students who were struggling outside of the classroom teacher. It's a combined effort. I would, as we always say, is you cannot tier or intervention yourself out of, uh, purgatory or scores and stuff. It is a combined effort. It takes the classroom teacher and it takes the interventionalist, it takes the principals. Um, and you know, everybody's on board, everybody's working at it. The teachers are fired up and, and trying to look at things. They've been asked to do more, they've been more involved in the school improvement. They've been, uh, more involved in all aspects of that and embracing the different curriculum initiatives. It's been a lot for them, I'll be honest, at the elementary level. It's been, it's been a tough couple. We've asked and asked and demanded a lot out of the elementary teachers. And they have responded and we're really excited. I thought we had a really good, um, inquiry, uh, PD at the beginning of the year. We did all the elementary and it was very successful and got a lot of good feedback from the teachers. So we're really excited about that, um, because we really want to balance it with just not just, drill and kill does not move a child along and it doesn't serve them. It may at some point give you a little bump in test scores, but at the expense of the child and their like or dislike for school. And so that's one thing we've tried to avoid and we've tried to really look at trying, and we've gotten way better at diagnosing reading issues and what it is we need to do and adding interventions. We just added another one, phonemic awareness and phonics, uh, down at the K one, two level and trying to address those issues. So we have improved tremendously. I cannot speak any more highly of our staff. They have been just fantastic. The principals as well, they've all got data walls. You can go into Mr. Bigelow's office and you can see it. I mean, they're all, they have rolled up their sleeves and they're looking at this and they really have, as Joyce noted, and that's what I was trying to get across, is the fact that despite all this day to day, they really looked at being instructional leaders. And the secondary has been there as well. And now we're going to, we've met all last year, planning, um, the secondary, OMS and OHS. We think we've got a pretty good plan to address some things and we're excited to be moving on with that as well this year and moving forward together. So I'm really excited for the efforts of Mrs. Beasley and Mr. Wolf as well, too. They are very instructionally focused and I think we can, we're going to be some paying dividends here in that's three, four years as well, too, there. So.
I have a quick one. I did have a quick question. Are, um, are special education students that have 504s and IEPs, are they mandated to test, do all the testing in all the grades?
Yes.
A few take the MI access.
So we have students that have significant disabilities that take an alternative assessment called the MI access that is less than one percent of all students. So ninety-nine percent of students with disabilities and 504s take, um, M step.
And that's true for all schools.
That's, the state makes them do that. It's not really okay.
Any other questions?
Ken, I have one.
Sure.
So the SAT eleven, uh, in English scored sixty-four point two percent. That same class scored seventy-six percent last year in the PSAT. What did they score in the PSAT nine in two thousand and sixteen?
Oh, I don't know that off the top of my head.
I, I guess, I guess because, I mean, if, if you, if you, if you, if you look crossing these things, you're within two or three percent, two or three percent, two or three percent, then you go fourteen.
Yeah.
You go fourteen percent on a test that you spent three years to prepare for. I, it's pretty significant. And, and, and that same class did pretty, what you, what you would expect in math. I mean, they didn't drop in both areas. They, they dropped fourteen percent in just English. They didn't equally drop fourteen percent in math.
Well, that is the number of kids proficient. So fourteen percent or twelve percent kid of kids were, were not as proficient. So it's not their average overall.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Okay, so that could be, you could, I mean, that's the hard part. And that's where you got to go through and trust your data analysis. You got to look and see what were the reasons? Was it kids that came in? Was there, was there a special reason that happened during that, that class that, that came through? Was the class bigger than others? Was it more transient? Was it, so there's a lot of things you have to look at. And just to answer that would be, oh, educational malpractice on my point, off the top of my head, to try to guess what it is. That's something though, that if we want to, we can ask the high school staff to kind of dive in a little bit more and see exactly if they can pinpoint. But they do go in and they look at what their strengths were, what their weaknesses were, and they have that information. Uh, usually I trust the high school administration to kind of work on that and, and Mrs. Dardell. Um, and then we go from there.
Thank you.
So if you want me to give you that, try to give that a little bit more information, we certainly can. And I am happy to do so. You just need to, to let Mr. Thron know when I will get that from him.
Tom, I have more of a general comment than a question. You know, like earlier, earlier you had mentioned Khan Academy, those types of things. Education is not, and I don't want to sound like you're taking this and, and shoving the blame somewhere else because it's not what this is an attempt to do. I think it's more of trying to educate, having two kids gone through high school and reaching different levels. It's really incumbent upon the parent to take an active role in making sure that their student is going to, uh, want to go to college or maybe they want to go into a different career. Um, to, to seek out different ways, a Khan Academy or, um, an ACT prep or, or an SAT prep course. And I think that's just as important to realize that it can't all be done in this building. It can't all be done in grades K through twelve. It has to be a partnership. And I think that's what I would like to see us really kind of, the message getting out there. We're going to do the best that we can. We're going to fight like heck to provide the courses for your child. But if you have aspirations, your child has aspirations and they want to do ten, fifteen, twenty points higher, you need to supplement that. And we'll, we'll provide the resources and, and all the links and, and the access points. But that's something that as a parent, I need to put my coat on and say, let's go, we're going to do this. And I think, you know, we, we miss that point a lot of times. And, um, you all do take a lot of responsibility, but as a parent, we have to take responsibility too at some point, so.
Well, and a lot of the research has shown everything that's done from zero to five is really like the most important time in the child's life. And they're not even in our buildings at that, at that point for the most part, unless they're in OELC. So, I mean, it really is a partnership and that's why I like with the IRIPs, we meet with parents, bring them in on the plans, get their input and try to work with them as we go along. One of the last things I would like to point out, too, is we're doing this all on the state minimum foundation as well, too. So we are spreading our dollars around and it does become, if there is a difference of what you can afford and what you can do, and we're trying to do the maximum that we can. And I think we're really proud of what we put in place to try to address some of these interests. Try to address buying new curriculum. Mr. Thron has really supported that avenue and has increased the curriculum budget. And we have been bringing in new curriculum and updating things rapidly. Um, prior to fourteen fifteen, we hadn't really put in a new piece of curriculum resource in the major content areas in almost nine years. So just keep that in the back of your mind as well, too. This is a lot of hard work and a lot, and that your, your staff is, is just, is, they're working hard. Mr. Thron?
Uh, similar to Dan, I have a comment about that because I'm, you know, Dan's got two kids that have gone through the school and so have I. And my kids that have gone through the school are on complete opposite ends of the spectrums that we're talking about. I've got my oldest, who just flunked. And he, he's got so many community college credits that he could get two degrees, but he didn't take the right classes that, that they said you had to. He took ones that interested him, too. Okay? Um, so he's nowhere with that. But he's the most successful because he's out, he's working, he's got a good job in sales. He just went and took a real estate course, passed the state exam on the first try. Done that very often. And then I got, on the other hand, my son that's just, who's at Arizona State, who's the top end of this spectrum.
Yeah.
And we, it, it appears is that both of them are on a separate path, but to success. And that's real important, that we're providing it from both possibilities.
And that's what we've really tried the last three, four years, the last three years, we've really tried to emphasize the push, especially the last two years. Try to address those interventions and try to address the needs of the kids. It's extremely important. Thank you. Just really quick also to update, uh, we left, uh, two weeks ago, sorry. Um, the, uh, you had some parents address the board on the issue or concerns over Leonard. Um, Mrs. Concha and myself have went out to Leonard. Um, we also were visiting, just to make you aware of the process. We are well aware of that situation long before the parents brought it to our attention. Uh, we are also aware of, uh, several other pinch points across the district at other buildings such as Lakeville, Clear Lake, high school, middle school. I mean, you name it, we've got pinch points all over the district. We were monitoring those. We went ahead, looked at Leonard, uh, looked at Lakeville, at Clear Lake. And we've addressed each one individually with a solution we think that fits. Um, and, uh, look forward to the success of the students, so. Thank you. Thank you.
That was great, Ken.
That's all I got to say. Mr. Thron, can I do this? Oh, and then we, I'm sorry, I almost forgot. Um, we got a motion for the curriculum that was presented, so I'll text it over. Dr. Presenton?
Sure, move to approve the high school medical foundation curriculum for the eighteen, nineteen school year.
Is there support, Mr. Bailey? Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Barnum, top that.
I don't think I can, but, uh, we'll see if I can be, um, brief, though.
That was a shock, Mr. Barnum. The bus was coming by again.
Let me give you quickly my safety update, uh, if I could. Uh, so I just wanted to give everyone a heads up with the Alice training that, uh, has occurred in the district. I think the last time that we spoke, two weeks ago, I, uh, did mention to you that all of the elementary school staff went through, um, our Alice training. Um, and again, I want to send a, a big thank you to the Oakland County Sheriff's Department and Jason Lohr as well for assisting us in, in that endeavor. Um, but since then as well, the middle school has, uh, staff has been trained. Um, and that went, I think, uh, really well. I know Deja's here this evening and I think she would, uh, corroborate that. That was great feedback by the staff and, uh, everyone really seemed to, uh, you know, be receptive to that training. Um, the high school, uh, will be taking, um, the Alice training, um, the live scenarios. I believe it's next Wednesday, the nineteenth. And so there's going to be approximately a hundred and twenty staff members, uh, trained, um, by the Oakland County Sheriff's Office as well. And, uh, so we're looking forward to that. Going forward, you know, we're looking how to age appropriately roll out, um, basically a lesson plan and picture books for the elementary age children that will teach, um, Alice style types of information. And so I just want you to be aware that that's probably going to occur sometime in the second semester of this year. Uh, but we are looking to do that. And then we're going to be talking administratively, how to roll it out to middle school and high school students as well. So we just want everyone to be aware that that is definitely on our minds and that is something that's going to be coming down the pipeline in the next few months. Okay? Um, in addition to that, I, um, just want to let everyone know that there's a Michigan State Police, uh, two thousand and eighteen grant for safety and security across the state for school districts. And, um, as part of that grant, um, actually David Pass, myself, Tony Sarkins and a few others, including Jason Lohr, got together and discussed our emergency operations plan for the district, which is a, quite a lengthy document. It addresses several facets of information in the district from cardiac response teams at each school to, uh, emergency response teams at each school, so on and so forth. It's quite a lengthy document, it's a great document. Uh, but we updated that document, um, because first of all, we know we needed to. But in addition to that, we needed to, uh, update that document, that emergency operation plan for the district because it was a requirement of the application for the Michigan's, uh, state police grant, which is due this Thursday. So I just want everyone to be aware that, um, there's some matching funds. If we're successful with this grant, that could be coming to the district. So I just wanted to give everyone a heads up regarding that as well.
Very good. Any questions?
All right. Uh, the next item I actually have, um, is, uh, oh, I started out. No, right here, I saw. You, you switch, we switched places. So we, we have a bond update, um, and just a, a short update actually from Gary Stellar from Thark Construction. So Gary, if you don't mind, just, uh, no presentation, just a verbal.
Okay, so, um, the last time we came and updated the board was at the schematic design level. Chuck, you were, you were at that point. At that point in time, things were cracking well within budget as they're developing the designs. So we move on from that to the design development phase. Um, and that's where we are today. We're completely designing development. Next phase is to complete the documents for the construction documents to be issued for bid. So, um, today where we stand with the design development phase completed, we are, we've got all the scope that is planned in the bond and it's included in the documents. And Thark has run estimates on the numbers and we're within the budget. Um, and we're good to continue to move forward into the construction document phase. In fact, the IDS is, is well in, on the way to that. Um, we're expecting documents to be complete around the end of October. So then we'll be getting documents out for bid about mid-Jan, uh, mid-November and receive bids, uh, end of November. So that then we'll be able to meet with contractors, verify their scope and work, be able to come to the board for the December eleventh meeting and then follow up on the December.
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth meeting, yep, later. Um, for the award of part of the contracts. And then we'll continue probably. And then we'll continue, probably hit the January 8th meeting and then there's a meeting at the 22nd. We should have everything awarded by the January 8th meeting. We, by bidding in November, we should be hitting a very good bid market. IDS has moved on very well on the documents. The goal was to be done and out for bid by December, so we're a little bit ahead of that. So the market should be better than if we were pushed into the first year. So that's important. Save money.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Thank you very much.
And finally on the agenda is actually, the Virtual Academy is looking to purchase 75, basically 18 laptop computers. And so I just wanted basically to discuss that. And this is a budgeted line item. The reason why we're bringing it forward is just from the OVA's increased enrollment this year. And so just wanted to let everyone know that's something that's really needed and we have it as a motion on the agenda tonight as well. And it will be general funded and again, it's a budgeted line item.
Someone like to make the motion? Ms. Concha.
Move to approve or disprove the purchase of 75 laptops from Inacom TSG for the Oxford Virtual Academy at the cost of $47,445.75.
Yes, ma'am?
We need to decide if we're approving it or dis-
Yeah, you don't read both.
Don't read both.
Correct.
So we need to say it over.
So if you're making the motion, you want to decide the side that you want.
Okay, thank you. Move to approve the purchase of 75 laptops from Inacom TSG for the Oxford Virtual Academy at the cost of $47,445.75.
Is there a second? Support? Yes. Andrew Schaefer?
No special.
Yes.
Is there a reason why we have to, like, isn't there a bylaw where it has to be a certain dollar amount, we're supposed to wait two weeks or something between meetings? I'm trying to remember the policy and how that's stated.
So in regards to purchasing, since these are purchased off the state bid list, we don't have to put them out for bid. In regards to approval, disapproval, waiting, that is a board preference. The only reason why we didn't come to you two weeks ago is we hadn't had student counts and so we wanted to wait till we knew exactly how many students were enrolled, how many students showed up. And so now we've got these kids and so now we want to purchase the equipment. That's the only reason why we waited. Normally, yes, we do like to give the board an opportunity to hear the recommendation, wait on it two weeks, and then purchase. And the board certainly has that prerogative tonight. It'll just be those students are going to have to wait two more weeks before they get their equipment. So that's why we were asked to come to this with a board action tonight versus letting you know what the numbers are, what we want to order, and then coming with a recommendation two weeks from now.
Yes.
Well, just thank you for explaining that. I just wanted to make sure, because I definitely don't want students to wait and it's all about the kids. So I just wanted to make sure that we were doing what we're supposed to do as far as bylaws and processes go.
Dan?
So if we were to approve it and you say we ordered the computers, we can have them from Inacom quickly?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, like, we waited, then the place you ordered, it's a week or two weeks after that? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Bailey?
Are these computers that are going to be going back and forth to school, back and forth? I'm just curious why we're spending $2,100 on carrying cases?
I believe these are issued to students and they remain with the students for the entire year, correct?
So 30 of those computers are going to be replaced at the OSEC lab. The OSEC kids do dual enrollment classes, so have logging on, currently they have Chromebooks in that lab. So logging on to Chromebooks does facilitate a lot of their dual enrollment classes, their college classes. And then the other remaining 40 of those laptops will be set up with students who need to have carrying cases. We have quite a few carrying cases that we need for Chromebooks and laptops to leave there.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Yes, sir.
Roughly what is our number right now at OVA? Like, just kind of what was our enrollment number?
Student count? I'd say it's up at least 100.
Yeah, we, over the summer, we enrolled over 500 students. We've had some kids who left and some who entered the district. I don't have that number right off the top of my head.
Okay.
I'd like to count that one. And so I don't want to commit educational offense.
Okay. Our numbers are up, but, I mean, I, yeah, I couldn't tell you whether it's graded 100 or a little below that, or that's just for OVA, not district-wide.
Right, no, I know, I was just trying to get a estimate on growth, I guess.
We've had a lot of our kids transition from part-time students and join our student program, which means that they have a greater need for resources as well, so.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Pass?
Thank you. Thank you for approving our personnel recommendations this evening that rounded out the last of our summer hires. As Mr. Weaver had mentioned, we had been evaluating some pressure points in the district and we are in the process right now of adding a position over at Leonard in their first grade. And so we're interviewing this Thursday. Hope to have finalists selected at some point next week, assuming all goes well. And then depending on who the recommended candidate is, we'll determine the timeline of when we're actually able to open that section, whether someone's currently employed in another capacity in another district, making sure we work with them. So we're kind of a TBD, but our goal is to, by the first of October, to have someone in place. So we'll have more information at our next meeting. One other thing I wanted to, I know that you had received some information, but wanted to at least just provide some additional insight. The district was selected by the Office of Civil Rights for a review. They are coming next Tuesday for the onsite review. We were fortunate that of all the buildings that they're, all the districts that they're reviewing, we're the first. And so I suppose it creates a shortened time period to be anxious about it, but also a shortened time period to put together all the documents. And a huge thank you to Lisa Butts, who has really taken the lead on this, is our CTE coordinator at the high school. She's been working every day to try and put together a busload of documents for OCR ahead of their visit. You've probably seen or heard of some of the surveys that have gone out to some staff and some segments of our community who are connected to this, all a part of gathering data on OCR's part to review our processes and procedures. During their onsite review, they're going to be particularly focused on our CTE programs and access to those programs, but there's going to be certainly some overlap into, you know, other areas of the school as well, just as a byproduct of what they're going to be looking for and the variety of things that they'll explore and the conversations they'll have with folks while they're here. They will do a final exit interview with us, with our team on Tuesday at the end of the day, just to give us some initial feedback. They will then compile that information into a formal report. None of this is going to be financially punitive if they have any findings. It's really just a way to, you know, dig into our processes and procedures and then the likelihood is they'll have some findings and recommendations for us that we'll then have until December 2019 to put a plan in place and correct. So as we get more information, we'll certainly keep the board informed.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Yes?
Just wanted to appreciate the packet that you provided and the quality applicants. I noticed that one of the teachers that we hired, there was just like you, Steve and Kurt involved in the interview process for the science teacher. Was there a reason we didn't include a science teacher from the high school during that interview process? Again, great applicant, not questioning that at all, just wasn't sure about who comprised the team.
Yeah, well, and I think, I think part of that was just arrangement of schedules and some of the things that were taking place. And we ran into some timing issues with a candidate that we had coming in who was going on vacation for two weeks to the West Coast and, you know, it was an area that was certainly, you know, a challenging area that we needed to fill. And so I think we just ran into some of those conflicts with district professional development and schedules and when we could make that work. But we did run through, you know, a full interview with him as well as a lesson that he had come in to teach, so.
Again, not questioning the applicant at all, I just always feel better when I see a team of teachers and as part of the administrative team that makes those kinds of recommendations.
Yeah, and there was, and maybe it was not included on there and it should have been, there was a larger team involved in the initial round interview. They did have a couple of science teachers from the high school. I don't remember if you, I don't remember the names, but I'm still learning.
Well, that's okay. I just appreciate that.
Yeah. Low and right over, both science teachers involved. Okay, we got last problem there, vacations, professional development, kind of related to, ran to a handful of events.
Great. I just appreciate having that teacher voice on all those committees.
Yeah, yeah, and we did that in the initial round, but it was the lesson that we were more limited in terms of the timeline.
Thanks for clarifying.
Anything else? Unscheduled audience participation.
Hello. I have a question about the computers in the state bid list. I'm not familiar with that, maybe you can explain that to me because I'm looking at a computer cost of individually over $600 and that seems like a lot per unit. Just curious what this, what the state bid list is, how that all works and what you can for $600 for computers.
So do you want me to answer that? I'll answer that. So there's numerous bid lists, not just for computers, but for buses, those types of things. And via state law for purchasing, you either have to put it out for bid for a number of weeks, advertise, you do that, or you can take advantage of the state bid list where the state is in essence already put these out for bid and let everybody bid on them. And then whatever that accepted price is, then you can purchase those for that price.
So they've done-
They've done all the bidding.
They've called the bidding process for us.
Correct.
Okay. Yes, I'm still getting questioned the price of the computers. I understand that they need them and my daughter's in OSEC, you know, and she's been waiting for them because she doesn't have the software she needs for one of her classes. So I guess that's just a question. Thank you.
Eric Foster, SAT scores?
Yeah, so just a quick question regarding the SAT scores. I understand how important it is to effort scores and, you know, compared against our competitive schools. So I guess in general, what I was wondering is, do we go and look at other schools that are, at our term, doing really, really well and see how they are being successful? I understand that maybe they get $12,000 for bid and we can get $700. Maybe we could look at schools that are at the same kind of progress conditions that we do and are doing much better and try to understand how they, how they're successful. Just from a, go ahead.
Yeah, we do go to different workshops where things are shared, we go to Oakland schools, we do visit other schools. I know that we've done that recently, but it's something that we do when the opportunities are there to work with other schools, we certainly would take advantage of that. Principals, are there in the audience, you want to speak to that a little bit at all?
We go to Oakland schools where they have a committee for our subject area and one of the first things they do, probably for the first two hours, is share some of their practices that are being successful. So we still talk all the time. We have OAA meetings, principal meetings, assistant principals meetings, really share those ideas, the practices, things they're going to develop, not in control. We're constantly in connection, we do this service and emails and a lot of these personal questions, you know, South Line, for example. I myself am on some agenda meetings, so one of the best parts of that is you get to go see other schools and see what they're doing, and by the way, some of their practices and I do a some, still some of our ideas.
So do you feel like they're transparent? Their secrets?
Okay, education is, education is very open, sharing, yes, yes.
I hope we are. So we have our, our-
That's enough. That's enough.
They don't share these things.
No, we understand.
Yeah, we communicate a lot, we do different avenues, bringing different people on board as administrators. Mrs. Concha, that's another way. The instructional coaches have a lot of, has a lot of contacts with other districts just down at Lake Orion, Clarkston. So they're sharing the same practices. And quite honestly, like, if you look at our elementary curriculum, it lines up with what Lake Orion offers exactly, basically, except for maybe the science and the fact that we actually have science kids and a lot of the teachers would like those. So I mean, it's Troy, we just sold Troy our old math expressions materials. So, you know, a lot of that, like you said before, there's a lot of factors going into that. But as far as sharing practices and so forth, yeah, we definitely reach out to others, we'll have communications, we'll have call up other, the principals have meetings where they share stuff and get to that communication and so forth as well too, so where they can see different practices in different buildings.
Do you have counterparts that you can-
I meet with at Oakland schools all the time. I go at least once a month to just the teaching and learning and becoming a vice of Mrs. Concha as well. But then I also go to data meetings, I go to type-in one meetings, I go to at-risk meetings.
Cal-cause trainings?
Yeah, yeah, and ID trainings as well too, so yeah, so we, I'm a pre-trainer.
Mary and Eric, thank you very much.
Just one more quick comment regarding Alice training. So I know somebody who did the training and thought it was fantastic, so thank you very much for providing that to our educators. She thought it was just going to be in class and we got a lot out of it. So what I'm hearing is do the board members have the opportunity to take that? I think the board member should take that class as well. If you're in school, you know, go to see your kid or representing the board, if something goes down, you should have that same opportunity that our educators have. So if you're not taking it, my personal opinion is you should be just knowing what, what I like that. It came home incredibly excited and I feel sorry for anybody who was in her class. Thank you for your input. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Clarifications? Long list of scheduled events for September and October, take a look at those. Final board comments. Dan, how about we start with you?
All right. So Ken, thank you for the exhilarating presentation. Don't let anybody tell you that you don't provide a little pizzazz here.
Yeah, it's all of that aside.
I mean, I looked over at Deja, if she was on the edge of her seat, I can just tell you that. But, you know, with all humor aside, I think it's really important that we understand when we vote on things and when we approve funds and we approve programs and we approve teachers and staff, that we understand where those dollars are going and we also understand where we're creating revenue. It's very, very important in today's day and age that we are trying to create revenue. Some people will disagree with that. Some people will say, "Well, you can't have this program because it costs too much." Well, that program, what a lot of people don't realize, generates revenue. And you might not like the way that the program is rolled out, but you know what, we're fighting for every dollar and we're fighting for every point on test score, so we got to do what we got to do. And I appreciate the deep dive and I know when you take a little bit of a dip, it's not always pleasant to get up there and give that information, but you know what, we can't hide. We've got to, we got to just dig in deeper and do a little bit better. And I think we're doing that. We're challenging everybody and everybody's stepping up to the plate. As far as us getting involved in Alice training, I think this board's going to change a little bit, so maybe we'll leave that at that. But the other thing that we want to be mindful of, and this is all superintendent and president, you tell us how you want to handle it, I don't know that board members should be in schools during the day, roaming around hallways, talking to the teachers. Not our role. Our role is to stay here and do these things. Now, when it comes to supporting everybody the best we can, that's our role. But we need to be very mindful of what our role is. And I think we've gotten to the point where everybody understands that we shouldn't be knocking on a principal's door at 1:00 in the afternoon and sitting down. I think we've all kind of gotten the idea that these are some pretty busy people and are some pretty busy people and we're putting a lot on their plate and us taking up their time during the school day isn't probably the best use of their time. So, not that it's a bad idea, it's just we've gotta remember those things and so. And Matt, you know, when you talk about technology and you talk about the way that this world is going, it changes so fast and it's very important that we keep our finger on the pulse of how technology is affecting our classrooms. Our classrooms are changing so very, very fastly, so very, very quickly and that change comes through technology. So anytime that we can teach the technology to make our students more marketable when they leave or while they're here, that's a good thing. So I appreciate the work that you all are doing there and I'm looking forward to all the great programs that we're gonna bring forward, so that's it.
Thank you, Dan. Ms. Schaefer?
I also was really impressed at the CTE presentation, I just think that that sounds like an awesome program and HOSA and all these programs every week is just great. Just one comment on the Alice training, I did inquire about that, although I don't think that board members are supposed to be in school asking for meetings and doing day-to-day contact. If we're not in the schools and don't see what programs are running and how these schools are being ran, how can we make effective decisions and approve or disapprove of multimillion-dollar purchases of curriculum and computers and laptops and teachers and some of us have young children. I have four kids in four different schools. I'm there all the time, not as a board member but as a parent. That's why I joined the board, because my kids are still in this school district, they're not all the way through yet, so I have a very different perspective than most of the other board members that sit on the board. So I would love to get that training and already inquired about it, but because, you know, some of us just, you know, play a different role, so. That comment being said though, I appreciate, Ken, I do appreciate your presentation. I know, okay.
It's okay.
That's it.
Oh, thank you very much. Ms. Guthrie?
Thank you. I'm just gonna echo what we've heard, the good news that Mr. Johnson and his team shared with us tonight is fantastic and I was really glad to have the big picture on that, to understand fully what that program goes through to evolve. So I agree that times move very quickly when it comes to technology and we're very lucky to have such qualified people engaging and trying to provide our students a CTE program and, you know, multiple, multiple different opportunities for learning and for taking that next, to the next step into a career, so thank you, Mr. Johnson and team, for that. I wanted to say to, to speak a little bit to what Mr. Weaver presented tonight with regard to the M-steps and the SATs, I feel like there was a lot of great news in his presentation that we may not have talked about. Our job is to ask the questions, as you well know, is to bring out the differences and the scores and to talk together about what that comes from and what we're doing to address that, but there were a lot of points in those slides that talked about what we should celebrate. I think Dr. Brazington said, you know, there is some good stuff to celebrate and we should definitely be doing that and I loved having Dan's point of the big picture on that too, that five years ago, we were nowhere close and the transition that we're going through with the, between the MEAT and the M-step and then also the ACT to the SAT, you know, we really are catching up very quickly, so I commend all of the administration and the teaching staff for being so quick on their feet to address those needs. I think we have nothing but good stuff to look forward to in the years to come and that's happening in the classroom right now, so I'm really grateful for that. And I do agree, as a parent and as a board member, I do agree that parents have an important role in getting their students engaged in that process at home as well as, you know, having that be something that teachers incorporate into the curriculum, so I think it's great and I would love to be part of any efforts, ongoing efforts, to get more messaging out to parents. If there's something that I can do personally as a board member, I'm happy to take that on, just let me know what that could be. So I again commend our great teachers and the staff and I wanted to give a shout out to Mrs. Gibson-Marshall who's here with us tonight, because the Naviance tool was rolled out. She rolled, helped us roll out that Naviance tool that, and worked with the counseling staff, right? To get that out there and that's a great informational tool when it comes to, you know, the next steps and colleges and, go ahead, if you wanna.
In full transparency, it just came from my email, I did the mail.
Oh, got it, okay.
I just had the technical.
Good for you.
Verge.
Okay.
I have to give credit to Stephanie Brubaker and Debbie Fox and people who...
Worked hard on it.
They're really good teachers.
Oh, good, okay.
Debbie Fox and Stephanie Brubaker did a great job.
Great, I was so glad to see that go out. I know that's gonna be something that's gonna really enhance what parents are able to do and engage in, so I think that's great and the opportunity to work closely with the counseling staff on just another level is fantastic. So the support I feel like we're building for our students is really great. So also I wanted to say a couple of things about what we didn't talk about. Congrats to Mr., is it Lefner? Lefner?
Lefner.
Lefner, sorry, stupid me, I don't know why that didn't occur to me, but congratulations to him for being the coach of the year. Isn't that fantastic? Our bowling coach was coach of the year, fantastic. And I think that the information that Mr. Thrun was able to share with us about the M-24 project coming up, I know that's all on everyone's minds, that M-24 is gonna be under construction here. Your board is actually informed because the superintendent has let us know what's happening with that and I think it's kinda nice that we can all work together to try to combat that just for our community. So, you know, that's kind of reaching out on the outskirts of what we do, but it's good to all be in the know, so thank you to Mr. Thrun for that. And then finally, fantastic quick response for adding that first grade teacher, Ken talked about this a little bit at Leonard and I know there are other pinch points, but I think it's great that we're responding so quickly. So not to be a super big cheerleader, but I mean, I think we have a ton to be proud of. Tonight's meeting really reminded me that there are a lot of things that we have to be proud of and celebrating in this district, especially that are driven by our fantastic administrators and staff. We're just very fortunate, so, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bailey?
First off, great program, Matt. That one, I look forward to watching that one, I think that one's gonna grow in size, not just financially, but great program. And again, I do like to see the test results. I'm glad to see that it's, like you said, it's not the end-all, tell-all, I mean, we've got some great teachers and it's nice to know they're teaching to the student, not strictly to the test score. Because like I said, some kids may not test well, but remember the stuff forever, so you know, I like to see that. And to kinda add to one of the comments that Dan had made during that discussion is the role the parents play, because I think that is an area that I think is forgotten. My daughter swims club in the offseason and the one thing that her coach there teaches is that important triangle, which is the coach, the swimmer, and the parent. And if either one of those fall, the pyramid shatters. And I think that's the same thing with our education. One thing I have found since we've been here is, especially through Power School, the first time I sent an email to one of those teachers, the communication floodgates open up through the whole year. Peyton did great here, Peyton could use some help here, hey, we want to do this, hey, has she thought about this? But it's instigated by the parent and I think once that key is in place, I mean, it just makes the teacher and the student that much more successful. So, you know, great job to all the teachers and principals.
Thank you. Mr. Steppich?
Thank you. Wow, I wanted to get away with not saying anything, but many things have come up, so I have to, sorry. And we're committed to be in a long meeting anyway. Matt, awesome job, thank you so much for putting the energies that you did into that, I'm really excited and I'm really glad that my daughter's, you know, getting that chance to do that, even though she's a senior, definitely I know it'll help her. So thanks so much. Ken, I'm gonna be real honest with you, tonight's presentation was long, but you kept my attention the entire time. I'm not, I'll be honest, there's been times in the past where I floated a little bit. But tonight, yeah, so it was really, it all was really interesting to me tonight, so there you go. I'm honest, man, I say it the way that's exciting to everybody to pick that, yeah. But, so thank you for that. And Jen, you stole my thunder, I wanted to bring out J.R. Lefner, that's just so awesome that he's getting presented with the coach of the year and what he did with the, what he's done with that bowling team and, you know, I've known J.R. for a long time, he started out, you know, he was winning the boosters with me and I took it over from him, the athletic boosters and he continued on with coaching and was the boosters that got that bowling team rolling originally, no pun intended, but. So that's just awesome, J.R., real proud of him. And now for the discussion that sort of spread around the corner here about our role as a school board, whether we should be in Alice training or not, I would love to take it just for my own personal, but as Dan makes a really good point in that our job as a school board is to rule from 50,000 feet and hire wonderful people to administer what we do or what we want. And we don't have to be sitting in the classrooms to watch how a program works, we have to rely on our experts, Ken, Tim, principals, coaches, to bring that information to us and tell us and show us through presentations like Ken, or new programs like Matt's. We don't have to be in the classrooms, that's not our job. If you're in the classrooms as a parent, then you're playing a dual role and that's great, but you're not there as a school board member, or should you be there representing that you're there as a school board member, because you're not, you shouldn't be, because that's not our role. And take some classes through MASV and you'll learn what that role is and then how you can be better at it. And so from that perspective, we have to, as a school board, rely on people that we hire to bring us that information about do we spend $45,000 on these laptops or whatever and rely on those expertise and let the administration, the day-to-day operation go on like it should without our input, because that's not where our input belongs. And I'm not trying to be mean or anything, I'm just saying, we have a role to play and we need to play it and we need to know it, so. That's all I have for that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Dr. Brazington?
Just wanted to thank Angela, we were referring to you in everything, like posted to us on time, really appreciate it. It's a big transition going from someone with such experience with Pat for years and years and you've just done a great job, so thanks for being our voice to Tim and making sure we have everything on time and understanding all the policies and the bylaws and when we can vote, when we can't vote and all those kinds of things, so thank you Angela and once again, welcome to this group, we really appreciate you. I'm also really excited about being able to add a teacher, I mean, such a big responsibility for the building principal and for Dave's department and it's just so exciting to have increased enrollment, which means more staff, which means more opportunities for our kids, so I'm really excited about being able to add staff, even though it's in mid-September. And just echo a lot of the comments, just the unscheduled audience participation, I really appreciate the dialogue that people are giving us from the audience, but our bylaw says that we have to have all statements should be directed to the presiding officer, so I just think it's really important that yes, we want to be casual and conversational, but I think it's really important that we honor the fact that it's not an open discussion, a two-way discussion. I think it's important that people who ask questions directed to President Donley, then he decides if we're gonna address this question at the moment or if he's gonna say, "Mr. Weaver, we'll get back to you, that's a great question." So it's not up to us to come up with an answer on the spot when someone else asks. And other than that, it's just great, they gotta be a wildcat and I echo everyone else's conversation and I'm a certified Alice trainer, so.
Go figure, so.
You know, I'm like, yes, I could train all of you. So, but in all seriousness, I will figure that out, maybe we can do something later, but yeah, so I have no idea how I ended up being trained, but I am. So certified Alice trainer, would you personally, Mr. Family?
I like it.
That's a marketable, that's a marketable skill.
It's a marketable skill, so.
I'll work backwards on your comments. Yes, navigating through number nine has been ever increasingly difficult, so I want to talk to you and Angela about, I mean, I started pre-talking about it now, now I guess I have to set the rules up, because it's not clear. Somehow it's not clear how it's supposed to be done and so we have to do that better and we'll take the blame, somehow we're not communicating properly, so we gotta figure out how best to do that, because it's not a dialogue. It's a way to share opinions and then I get to decide whether it gets talked about now or whether we dish that off like we did months ago and said, "Did I hear you clearly?", we'll get a response back to you. And so I will do a better job at that and it's gotta be something in the communicating it early. The two phrases that I think of is proactivity and excellence. I mean, I, over the last several months, I have watched presentations that are heavily weighted in proactivity, wanting to get ahead of something, wanting to get out in front of something and then knowing that we have such skilled people that we don't just do good enough, we do something that's excellent. Matt, excellent, just excellent. Last meeting, the health and excellent, wow. So I'm just very proud, just very proud, that we don't just do good enough, we do excellent. So with that, is there anything else?
I think the board has pretty much said everything, I'll just make one clarification because Mr. Weaver, this evening, numerous times, kept saying, "Mrs. Conja" and unless she's gotten married and I didn't know about it, it's Miss Conja, so. That could be, but as of tonight, it's Miss. But no, I appreciate all the input, the feedback and the participation of the board, it's been just a great start to school and, yeah, I'll end it there, very, very proud.
All right, very good. Everyone, let us make a, we've got a motion. Dan?
Move to meet and close session pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, Section 8A, to consider a periodical personnel evaluation of a staff member if the name person requests a closed hearing, and Open Meetings Act, Section 8D, to consider the purchase or lease of real property only until the time of an option to purchase or lease the real property is obtained.
Is there support? Ms. Guthrie? Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, have a great night.